Everyone, and welcome to the Moscow City Board of Adjustments meeting for April 19. We will start with our approval of the meeting minutes from November 17 of last year. And just for the record, you didn't have to attend that meeting to approve these minutes. It's just basically reviewing scribners and making sure that it matches the record so that we have enough that vote.
Isn't the minutes for the November 29 meeting? Which is on the agenda for those minutes was the November 17 meeting. Is that, am I reading that correct?
I think you're correct. Yeah, the meeting, the meeting occurred on the 17th and the minutes were the follow-up. Yes, correct.
I'm moved that we approved the minutes of the November 29 to 2021 meeting.
Yeah, I was seconding it.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstain? None? They pass, they're done. We are going to move or swap Agenda Items 2 and 3, and we'll just jump right to the conditional use permit that we're here for.
Thank you for making it out tonight. Tonight on the agenda, we have a conditional use permit hearing for residential apartments on the ground floor of an existing motel located at 706 North Main Street. The applicant's proposing to change the use of an existing 54-unit motel, the Hillcrest, located at 706 North Main Street, to apartments. This is located in the Motor Business zoning district where a conditional use permit is required to have residential units on the ground floor that are not behind a commercial use or above. There are 15 proposed units on the ground floor that would require that conditional use permit. This is the subject property here. You're all familiar with the location, just east of Main Street, north of McKinley Drive, adjacent to Moscow Building Supply. So a little bit of background, the Hillcrest Motel is built in 1958. Many of the units were historically allowed to have extended days and provide for that type of lodging. Extended stay lodging has been located on the second floor and the first floor behind those, behind the hotel rooms for many years. This is a image of the subject property facing north.
Notice the snow.
Yeah, this was just last week. This is the subject property looking from the northbound looking south. The plan. We can kind of go through those details here. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit for the highlighted portion of the hotel. That is the only portion of the property that requires a conditional use permit. All other residential use is permitted by right. This is the proposed layout of a studio apartment that is, that the applicant has provided, showing a small kitchenette and a laboratory as well as the studio area. As far as zoning goes, like we talked about, this is in the Motor Business zoning district. Residential uses are permitted within that zone, but a conditional use, as we've talked about, is required for anything located on the ground floor along that street frontage. And the applicant is proposing the conditional use for those 15 units. This is an image of the zoning showing the Motor Business zoning district in blue. R4 Zone, which is a multifamily zoning district, is in purple. So the site and surrounding land uses, the lot itself is 1.7 acres in size. It approximately has 300 feet of frontage along Main Street and 270 feet of frontage on McKinley Street. North of that is Moscow Building Supply, Zoned Motor Business. To the west, across Highway 95, is the Affordable Vet Care Carpet Mill, a storage building owned by Moscow Building Supply, and that is all Zoned Motor Business as well. And then to the south, you have Vacuum Art and a residential house and a shop. Those are also Zoned Motor Business. To the east, you have a complex of residential apartments that is owned, R4, multifamily residential. And again, here is an aerial of that subject property calling out those different locations. So parking and access to the subject property, the current motel, the use requires 54 parking spaces. I think there was a typo in your packet. I think it said 55, but with 54 sleeping rooms, it requires 54 parking spaces. The change would increase that requirement to 78 parking spaces with all units being used as residential. The site currently has 78 parking spaces. There are a total of four street approaches. There are two along Main Street or Highway 95 and two along McKinley Street. The comprehensive plan, in the Chapter 2 character, a community character in land use, designates subject property, future land use as auto-urban commercial. That is an area designated that should provide for commercial services and developments that are motor vehicle oriented or those which require a large amount of land. Should be located adjacent to existing commercial developments and along major arterials where vehicle traffic can be accommodated. Comprehensive plan continued in Chapter 3. Community Mobility Section identifies Main Street as an actual highway, as we talked about, Highway 95, and McKinley Road as a neighborhood street. Continuing with the comprehensive plan, Chapter 6, a goal there is to enhance and strengthen the regional economy utilizing the strengths and assets of the region. So it is staff's recommendation tonight to hold the public hearing and upon testimony and consideration, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit for the residential units on the ground floor, not behind or above a commercial use, located at 706 North Main Street with no conditions, and to direct staff to prepare those relevant criteria and standards to review at an upcoming meeting. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Before we get started with our questions, I don't know if any of the other board members have noticed, but this set of drawings has Design West title blocks on it. I have not worked on this project on purpose, I believe. Your contact at the office has been Cameron, so there is no conflict of interest on my end. If someone thinks there is, I'll gladly go home and eat dinner, but I just, for the record, just wanted to make that clear. Any questions for staff? You answered my parking quantity, that one. Let's clarify.
Actually, pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions.
No.
One for you. Cole, any questions? All right. Thank you. With that, we'll open it up for the public hearing. We'll open it up for those that want to speak in favor, and then after that, those that want to speak against or neutral, just come up to the mic, state your name and your address, and we'll go from there. Does the applicant like to come up and say something?
Is that okay?
It's perfect. Since there's two of you, state both your names and addresses, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You guys all use microphones. I have trouble hearing you, and I don't have my hearing.
Are we?
They are all on.
Are they live?
Yep, absolutely.
I'll try and talk closer.
Testing 1-2.
Hello, my name's Dan Jacobs. I'm from Richland, Washington, 1319 Jubilee Street.
My name's Robert Jacobs, also from Richland, Washington, 295 Gage Boulevard.
I just wanted to start off by saying that we've loved working in the city of Moscow. We're Moscow, sorry. Old habits are tough to break. But we're currently working on the Empire Apartments on 645 Pullman Road, and we've been working through that with the building department. Jeff, or sorry, Rob Bafus has been our primary contact there, and we've been working with a local contractor, Carlton Builders. And so far, we're just very excited about bringing student housing to the community and taking an older property and making it nice and new again. I'll leave it to my brother to talk about the Hillcrest.
Yeah, thank you, guys, and thanks for the Board of Adjustment and the whole city of Moscow for working through us with the process. We appreciate it. Daniel and I are the co-regional managers for Fortify Holdings, the company who has purchased the Idaho Inn, now the Empire, and we're under contract to purchase the Hillcrest and do a similar renovation there as we're doing down on 645 Pullman Road. So kind of an overall vision, pretty similar. Take the existing hotel units, turn them into studio apartments, and we go into these old buildings, like Daniel kind of mentioned. We take an old asset that might not necessarily be, you know, a marquee shining light in the community anymore, put a lot of money into it to make it into a nice new asset that can compete with new apartment buildings across the community. At the Idaho Inn, we've gone through and done a lot of electrical and plumbing work. Over at the Hillcrest, it'll be even more extensive. We'll go through and do the entire electrical upgrade, probably bring a new electrical service to the property in order to add the kitchens. The plumbing will all get redone. All new finishes on the inside of the unit, they'll be just like a brand-new apartment building from the inside. From the outside, the exterior of the building will get changed quite a bit, some of the overhanging parking structures and other architectural features that just make the building feel a little bit dated. Those will get updated. All new landscaping plan, new asphalt in the parking lot, new paint, new, really new everything. It'll, it'll be an exciting project and hopefully turn an old, underperforming asset in the community into something that people are attracted to. And we know that the rental market here is extremely strong. We've seen, you know, the building over on 645, the old Idaho Inn. We're getting close. I think July 1 is our estimated completion date. We've already got approximately 10% of the unit's leased for the upcoming school year. So we know that there's a need for housing here, and we're excited to provide that to the community. So just want to thank you guys again for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant before they scoot?
No, actually, I don't.
I have one question. I think you just answered it, but I was just curious about the timeframe and when you were going to be able to complete the project that you're talking about, because it sounds pretty extensive.
So the Idaho Inn, as Robert said, will complete approximately on July 1, which will time it perfectly for the upcoming school year. The Hillcrest will probably be closer to next February when it will complete.
Okay, so with the Hillcrest, you're going to also do kitchenettes? Is that what I understand?
Correct. Yes. Each unit will get a kitchen with a refrigerator, a convection microwave oven combination, a stove top burner, venting for the cooktop. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Would anybody care to come up and speak in favor of this conditional use application? Please step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
My name is Jane Pritchett, and I live about from here to there, from the Hillcrest, in my own home. And I am just a little concerned. I'm hoping that we're going to keep some low-income housing in Moscow as well as fixing up everything and making the rent go up. We really need additional housing for low-income folks and also for the older and single people that are on fixed incomes. Many of these residents don't have or can't afford vehicles, and so that Hillcrest area is fabulous for being able to walk anywhere that they can, and it's close to hospitals, shopping, and everything else. This conditional use permit, I'm thinking, should provide an equal opportunity in practice as well as in, on the wording here. And I'm hoping that there will be a portion of those 70 apartments for, for people who can't afford the big stuff. The previous owners of the motel were really supportive and working with me and others, and they also had a deal with the Department of Corrections to welcome former people that were on probation and stuff, and the people were all generally pretty good. I think the Fortify Holdings that proposes this permit is doing a lot of buying motels all over the country, and I think that's, that's great. I just worry that we're going to phase out all the people that can't afford things. And Fortify's website says they are going to be equitable and support people in all backgrounds, race, and religions. And they have made, I hope that we, this Board of Adjustment, will make a public commitment to make sure that they go to their stated mission and value statements and make sure that that does happen at the Hill, I'm going to call it the Hillcrest because that's what I know it as, because we do need the housing too. And I'm happy to hear that they're going to work with other partners, including Sojourners, Alliance, Habitat for Humanity, Family Promise, and others, because there really is a horrible need for low-income housing here. So that's mainly the thing I wanted to kind of put on the board. Probably said too much.
Jane, can you tell us what your address is?
Oh, yes, it's 615 North Washington. And if you cross McKinley in your, your map that you had there, if you cross McKinley, I'd be about a half a block from there.
Thank you.
Even though I have a Washington address, it's, my house is right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to come up and state your position on this conditional use permit?
I'm Joel Plaskon. I live a couple blocks away at Dolly Drive. I drive past this place a couple times every day, and I support the application. I'm happy to see the investment in the property. I had some concerns that I've been working through. One of them had to do with the condition of the parking and the landscaping, and I was happy to hear the applicant state for the record that they plan on upgrading the parking lot and the landscaping situation. One of the areas was the driveway at the southeast corner of the property, that back parking lot is gravel and that, and it downslopes toward the street, so the gravel tends to track out into the roadway, and then, of course, that washes into the storm sewer system, which taxpayers have to pay to clean and maintain. So I'm hoping that would be paved, or at least that back driveway would be paved to prevent that gravel situation from tracking out onto the street. And there are some barren landscape planters that need to be filled, that I'm hoping they're going to fill with trees and shrubs. I'm guessing the vacancy rate recently as a motel and the lack of investment's been pretty low, and it's probably going to go up after the improvements to the property and the change to apartments, which will increase traffic, but that's okay. It's on an arterial. I guess the only other issue I'm left with that I'd like to make an observation about has to do with the density. Of course, the comprehensive plan, which is one of your criteria that you have to find compliance with, has the property designated as auto-urban commercial. If you look at that description in the comp plan, it doesn't contemplate residential development, but the underlying motor business zone does. But you don't have any guidance in the comp plan for density in the auto-urban commercial designation. So in my mind, what you do then is you go to the next comp plan designation that might be applicable if it were not auto-urban commercial, which would be high-density residential, and that in the comp plan is 15 to 26 units per acre. And what we're looking at here is 36.47 dwelling units per acre, so 10 and a half units per acre more than what it, that would be if it was high-density residential. So I just ask the board to consider that, whether or not this 36.47 dwelling units per acre is appropriate, or if it might be better, more appropriate to be reduced to the maximum in the comp plan if it were high-density residential, which is 26. And that could be accommodated by converting, not converting because they're not there yet, but by changing the plan for more of the units to be one-bedroom instead of studios. So just something I wanted to give you a think about and chew on.
We have two other folks out in the office. Would you care to come up and make any comments? I see their heads shaking no, so with that, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for deliberation on the board. Questions, comments?
Actually, no. I think maybe in, speaking in behalf of the last individual who spoke, can I, can I ask the applicants, do you in fact plan to asphalt that parking lot that he's concerned about?
We do.
Can you, can I get one or the other of you to come up? Because the, we heard your response, but our, our staff in the back didn't get it on the record.
And therefore, no one on TV does.
Yeah. On television, right? So the answer to that was yes.
Yes.
Now, one of the things I, I heard at the Habitat for Humanity Dinner on Saturday night was that, and I don't know if the, if this was for both Moscow and Pullman or just what the area was that they talked about, but they said that last year that it was deemed that there was 1,400 units were lacking in the community, communities, but 1,400 units were.
For residential use?
Yes, that were, were shortage of 1,400 units, and so there were, you know, talk about trying to get more residential home sites or, you know, build, builds here in the, on the Palouse. And, and this particular project, similar to the Idaho Inn, it's a refurbishing of an existing building, and I think that it's better refurbished, in my mind, than to tear down and build new. And it sounds like they're going about it in the proper manner of upgrading everything to make it appealing to the people that might move in. We didn't talk about or hear anything about the cost of, you know, of rentals, but I would imagine in order to be competitive and fill the place, they would have to have a price out there that people would be willing to pay.
I agree with what you said. Three of those 1,400 people are my three youngest kids who can't, I can't get them out of the house.
There's an incentive there.
But, but there, there, there really is a shortage, and what few are out there are old, they're outdated, and they're expensive. And so I know in looking at this plan, the, it also updates to accommodate accessibility, which that structure now doesn't. Our board can't address Jane's direct comment of what they price at. That's market-driven. We can't control that. But as you pointed out, Steve, they'll, they'll have to be competitive, just like everybody else. But, but the need is definitely there, and I think they pointed that out, that it's, it's, it's an asset that's there that, that can be reused.
The other thing is too, that when George owned it, he had long-term tenants there, and, and that was something that was already embedded in the, in the facility, that he had long-term tenants. He also took care of short-term tenants as well on the front side, but he had a lot of long-term tenants in that facility, and so.
So its use isn't completely changing 100%.
Yeah, it's changing. Some of that isn't changing much at all.
Okay.
Just an upgrade, for sure.
Cole, comments?
No, I agree with everything that's said, and it sounds like an upgrade is overdue at the facility, so.
Ann, could you comment to the, to the volume that Mr. Plaskon?
To the density?
Yeah, to the density.
Yeah, typically, when we look at multifamily housing, there's a lot size minimum or a square footage density per unit. In this case, if it were Zoned R4 for multifamily use, it would be one, it would be 800 square feet per unit of density. What that calculates to, the overall lot size is just under 74,000 square feet, and this proposed 62 units at 800 square feet per unit, it's just under 50,000 square feet. So if we were to take the same calculation that we apply to a multifamily unit being new and proposed in apartment building, this meets those standards.
Any other, any other thoughts? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, my only other thought is that the property is in motor, motor business, and that's, that hasn't changed. It's not in R4, it's in, it is in motor business.
Motor business does allow for that residential, high-density residential use, though, as long as it's behind the, the commercial use or above. So it's really just the, the front 15 units we're looking at. The density wouldn't change.
Right, that's what I was about to say. Really, this only applies to those front 15, and they haven't been used that way actually in the past, so I, I don't see issues with this at all.
In that case, I, I move that we approve the conditional use permit application for the, to, for the modification of the Hillcrest Motel as, as proposed to the board, and direct the staff to prepare the statement of relevant criteria and standards.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hear none? Motion passes. That ends that one. So that gets us to our third item of business, and that is election of officers, which has not happened for a while. Any volunteers? Who wants to volunteer to be chair?
You got a little piece of paper? Put some votes in.
Yeah, we need a chair, we need a vice chair. Nominate Tim.
Who are you?
I know how it works.
Yeah.
I make a, I nominate Joe as the chairman.
I know Marshall didn't show up, and he sent an email to that effect, too. I don't mind playing this role, but I still work out of the Spokane office, so I can get here at 7:00, but I can't get here by 5:30 when we have our follow-up meetings. And now that COVID's over, I was able to kind of hide that because we all, you know, zoomed into the meetings, but if, if the board and the staff is okay with that.
We were able to make that work.
Then I, I don't mind, I don't mind playing this chair role.
Very good.
I think you do an outstanding job on it, and as far as the vice chair, I would, I would like to nominate Marshall.
I do too, and since he's not here, I'll second that.
Most appropriate.
And since he's been mayor before, he's been on multiple commissions, he knows, he knows the process, so that's what you get for missing a meeting. So do we, do we nominate and do we have to do this like a, like a?
Just, yeah, you would nominate.
Like any other motion?
I make the motion that we have Joe as a chairman and Marshall as a vice chairman.
I second it.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstain? None? So I guess that part of the meeting is.
Marshall's on Zoom, is he?
Is Marshall in on Zoom? No, he would have, he would have chimed in if he was.
He's going to share that with him.
Um, last item, any reports, announcements? I mean, obviously, we have two new people. Welcome.
Welcome. Cole, the other Tim is, is out, but I'm sure we'll get to meet him. Will he be here next?
I am not sure how long he's out of town for. Jennifer, do you happen to know? I'll shoot him an email, see if he's going to be here.
Okay. Well, if he's in Arizona, I hope he gets sunburned for missing his first meeting.
Yeah.
And then you said we might have a couple on the horizon. I know we have a meeting next week at 7:00.
Yep, next week at 7:00, and then probably within the next couple of days, you'll get an email from Jennifer trying to schedule. We can put the next two on the same agenda. I'm pretty comfortable with that.
Okay.
So that we can get two hearings out of the way in the same night.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that way we can kind of get through them.
Okay. All right. With that said, I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all.